We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
And Shuldiz.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Shuldiz.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Next is consent items, and I'll call on our city clerk, Renee Larson.
Mayor Reese and councilmembers, tonight for your approval, I have the city council minutes of August 4th, 2025, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of August 11th, 25, the Wilmer Police Civil Service Commission minutes of July 25th, 2025, as a draft, except and final project number 2301-A, Gorton Avenue Area Improvement Project, introduction of ordinance amendments, amending ordinance number 1533 to reschedule the public hearing, the Wilmer Airport FAA agreement, grant agreement, runway 1331, edge lighting and guidance signs, the Knights of Columbus lawful gambling application, the accounts payable report from 7/31/25 to 8/13/25, and for your information, I have the monthly building report from July of 2025, the finance report through 7/31/25, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report from June of 25, and the directors' reports.
Thank you. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
No items removed, so we'll go on, and number eight is the open forum. I didn't get, there's nobody, okay. So we'll go to the public hearing, the assessment hearing, and I'll call on our city engineer, Evening, Jared.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Brief presentation here as it relates to the final assessment hearing. It is a public hearing, so after public has had an opportunity to provide their input, there is a resolution enclosed in your packet for your consideration this evening. Just a recap of the project area. A number of areas throughout town were included in the 2025 improvements. 20th Street area, our West Street Improvement Project includes a number of streets, Eagle Ridge Drive, Fairway Drive, 7th, 8th, a lot of streets on that west side. The next project is Technology Drive. That's an improvement project that'll begin tomorrow. Business 71, Highway 71 improvements, that's currently under construction. And then the 7th Street Northwest and 15th Avenue Northwest improvements, also under construction. The, this slide simply shows a figure of where the project areas, the various project areas are located. Lot of questions sometimes come in about how the front footage is calculated. Here's some diagrams that we'll kind of walk through a little bit just to give you an understanding of how those adjusted front footages are calculated. Standard lots, simply it's the frontage on the street. We do have a few rectangular variation lots, that's where the front and the back widths are different. So basically, that is an average of the front and rear lots. Triangular lots are calculated based on the average of the front length and the lot dimension 150 feet from the front of the lot. Cul-de-sac lots, midpoints of the side lot lines is the distance calculation there. Irregularly shaped lots, those distances are calculated at the 30-foot setback line. And then finally, the last two types of lot classifications we have this year. Corner lots, which the corner lot are assessed for the short side plus 30% of the long. So, short side, 30% of the long in corner lots, and that's only if there's improvements on both sides. Otherwise, if there's only an improvement on the short side, that's the assessment. If there's only an improvement on the long side, that 30% would be applicable there. And then the double frontage lots, the assessment is based on the full length of the side where the utility service comes from, and then 30% of the other side. So just to recap, the improvements, this is broken down by street sewer, water, and storm. Street improvements totaled approximately $6.34 million. Sanitary sewer component was about $53,500, water main approximately $117,000, and then storm sewer, $134,000. The assessment rates for 2025 are listed there for you. Street reconstruction on an adjusted front footage basis of $66.75. Sanitary sewer, $17. Sanitary sewer services, $875. Water main reconstruction, $21.75. Water services, less than or equal to one inch, $1,100. Water services greater than an inch, $3,100. And then storm sewer reconstruction at $14.75 an adjusted foot. For the overlay improvements, there are three different lot classifications. We have small, medium, and large. Those small lots would be any lots with frontages between 0 and 60.9 feet. The medium, 61 feet to 99.9 feet, and then large lot classification of footages over 100, greater than or equal to 100 feet. You can see the rates there. By way of reference, I did include the 2024 assessment rates. You'll notice that very much in line with the rates that were identified for 2024, somewhere in that 4% to 5% range, depending on where the, on which item that you're looking at there. Assessment breakdown, street and utility reconstruction, $53,433 to private properties. The overlay, $2,104,920 to private properties. You'll note the city properties listed there, the city properties that have frontage along these improvements, so that corresponding value is listed there. And then the total. So, one of the questions that comes up quite frequently is what is the term? The term is 15 years. The assessment rate has been identified at 5.8126%, and that's based on the rate that was received through the bond sales for the improvements. So what does that really mean? Basically, estimated annual payment on an assessment of $1,000 is approximately $102. So for every $1,000 in assessment, the annual payment is approximately $102. There are some payment policies that I wanted to run through. Lot of words here on this, on this slide, but some noteworthy items. So, by October 31st of 2025, partial prepayments are an option for the assessments. Those partial prepayments have to be $1,500 or greater, and there will be no interest accrued. Otherwise, the full payment option also exists as well. If payments are to be made between November 1st and November 15th of this year, those payments can also be made to the city clerk, but it will include daily interest from the date of the bond sale, which is July 21st. After November 15th, the 2026 payment will include interest from the date of the bond sale through December 31st of 2026. So, if you pay after November, or November 15th, you'll get the interest from the date of the bond sale plus the following year's interest. And then, once the assessments are certified to the county, and the unpaid balances, those will be included on property tax statements and collected by Candyote County. The first half payment of property tax is being due May 15th, and the second half being due October 15th. And then finally, the, if there is a full payment to be made after November 15th of this year, that would be, those payments would be paid to the county auditor with interest through December 1st, 31st, sorry, of the following year. And with that, Mayor, council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions before I open the meeting? I will then open the public hearing, and public who wants to speak can come to the podium and give your name and address.
Mr. Reese, a lot of you, I haven't been here in a long time. I think you're kind of happy about that, maybe, I don't know, we'll find out. My name's Tom Amberk, my address is 909 Southwest 17th Street in Wilmer here, and I'm here to address an assessment that I got on a property that I have in Valley Brook. It's some property that I had bought in, in 2005. It was a tax forfeiture at the time. You gotta excuse me, I got handouts, but not enough for everybody. So I'm gonna go, every other person if I can.
You give them to staff, give them to Kyle.
Perfect. I should've taxed Kyle some videos.
Kyle will distribute them.
Pardon?
Kyle will distribute them to the council.
Yep. Okay, this property sits, if you look at, like I had mentioned, I wish I would've made out more. If you go down 7th Ave, and as you're coming into the development back there, Valley Brook, the property to the right, the 1.8 acres is parcel that I own. At the time, in 2005, we had Jeff Redberg, I don't know if anybody remembers him, he was county staffer, and I had one other person look at the property, and we determined that there was enough land to build a parcel, a house on. At that time, I was told not to build because the development back there, the new development, which I can't see the street, but the one that's being processed now, the farthest one to the west, that was not, that development wasn't done correctly because there was supposed to be an egress street, and there never was one put in. So that development wasn't completed, and 7th Avenue was supposed to be completed and gone through, and it never happened. I was told at the time to wait because the city was gonna force them to put in that street, and that never happened. So in the meantime, the city planner at that time had retired, and I had estimates, and we went as far as hooking up the city sewer and water. We had estimates to get that done, which that has not been done yet. At the time, it was about $5,000. The last time I hooked up city and sewer was about two years ago over in Pleasantview, and that cost now is $17,000. So that has gone up substantially in the meantime, so that cost has gone up. Second is, if you look at the pictures, County Road 5 put in a development of apartment buildings, and you can see by the runoff that it is flooding my lot down there. You can see that there's sinkholes. I drove by there today. One of the pictures that you're looking at there was from a couple weeks ago, the sand around the drain sewer. That, they pulled over and filled in the sinkhole, thank God. So at least the sinkhole doesn't exist anymore. So some people would say that maybe that lot isn't buildable anymore, and I would probably have to agree because of all the water that has been kind of directed to that. So I'm here today to ask, forego the assessment until we can figure out what we're gonna do with this property.
Mr. Amberk, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Just here my clarification, as you drive down 7th Avenue, is this just past the farm site?
Yes.
On the right-hand side?
Yes, on the right-hand side. In the past, we've cleared off trees, we cleaned some of the brush out of there, and then in about 2010, 2009, when I figured I wasn't getting anywhere with anybody, I decided to just leave it go. So currently, I wanna say it's been 16 years since we've done anything over there. The other thing besides the runoff from the apartment buildings is there was a drain that goes about halfway down 7th Avenue, if you look at the pictures there. And I was told by a city staffer that that no longer was functioning, and then it was, I suppose about a year later, you can tell when you drive back there that there's another sinkhole about halfway back. So that kind of limited some of the drainage that was coming through at that time, too. I've held this property for 20 years, and it definitely is getting worse as far as water goes.
All right, well, what do we do with?
Our engineer will look at it, and that'll be determined in the next council meeting, anything that needs to move forward.
I addressed Bolton and Mink, and I talked to them, and all I got was, oh, boy. Thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, council.
I'm Chris Van Evelyn, I'm with the Wilmer Elks Lodge on 20th Street Southeast. I'm not here to complain about the amount of the assessment, I just wanna make it known that we have some issues with the project being done over there. We've had some loss of income due to the project, and our front and back, our back parking lot between the buildings has been completely destroyed by them running heavy equipment back and forth, because they're going around our, back and forth around our building on our parking lots, doing their construction. So the back is completely busted up, cracked, split open, it's, they left, they ran our temporary water, they laid that across, we rent out storage units behind, I don't know if any of you are familiar with, behind the Elks Lodge, there's storage units, they laid the temporary water right in front of all the overhead doors. So now we have customers wondering if they're gonna get a discount on their rent because they weren't able to use their storage units. So I'm here to figure out, or who I need to talk to, or make it known that, who we need to talk to about our parking lots, about the water line laying in front of the doors. The easement along the building, they went way past easement as far as tearing up the lawn and stuff. I addressed it with the Bolt Minky guy that was there one day, that they had dirt up and, you know, and they said, well, that's where they got it. Fine, but it kind of makes a mess of the place, and when I discussed that the water line couldn't be there, it laid there for two months in front of all the doors. So, the project is about a month behind, and I'm assuming they're gonna say it's because it's raining, but there's a lot of days they're not there, or one guy shows up. They've left the street open quite a bit, so the lot of water has been sitting in there and turning it to mud, so the concern is just what kind of shape the street is gonna be in when it's done. We don't want to pay an assessment on something that's gonna need to be repaired because of mushy street underneath the asphalt. So I'm not sure who, you know, if we need to talk to Bolt Minky about our parking lot, them replacing our parking lot, or who is, who's gonna be responsible for that.
Trying to think of.
We'll take down the concern, and then we'll, we'll have our engineering firm look into everything of the concerns that he brought up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Hi, my name is Judy Tubbin, and I'm here representing Ridgewater College on 15th Avenue Northwest. We have six parcels, and the assessment totals a little over $250,000. And as the college moves to a model where we're more dependent on tuition than we are to state aid, dependent on state aid, we're asking for a review by the engineer for the assessments to the college as well.
Or we'll have staff be in contact with you. Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, I'll close the hearing.
I have letters to read.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
The first letter I have is addressed from a man named Abdi Fatah Ali. His address is 511 7th Street Northwest, parcel number 955400390. I see my name looks to me much, I, his English is not very good, so I apologize, I'm trying to make, understand what he's writing. He does not, he looks to me like it's much money for the work, please, I can't pay at all for that. Can you look again, please, or can the city help me? I don't think I can pay that much money. Signed, Abdi Fatah Ali. The next letter is written to me, and is signed by Renee Franklin Ruff. Address is 921 15th Avenue Northwest. I don't see a parcel number. Dear Renee Larson, this letter objects to the special assessment for street improvements totaling $6,775 levied against my property at 921 15th Avenue Northwest, Wilmer, Minnesota 56201. I am a single retired 68-year-old woman. This assessment represents a significant financial burden. Review of this assessment and consideration for relief are required, requested. Consideration of the following are requested. Financial burden paying an assessment in addition to other household expenses could cause significant financial strain. Disproportionate benefit, while improvements may have been necessary, the assessed amount seems excessive compared to the actual benefit to the property will receive. Minnesota Statute 435.193 regarding hardship deferral for seniors, disabled, or military personnel is acknowledged. Consideration for these provisions is requested due to the circumstances. An opportunity to explore options for a reduction, reduced assessment, a payment plan without interest or a deferral would be appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Renee Franklin Ruff. Final letter I have is from, submitted by Steve and Jody Okens, parcel number 959100156, located at the corner of 15th Avenue and Northwest and Northwest First, or North First Street. Mayor Reese and Wilmer City Council members, due to a family emergency, my wife and I are not able to attend tonight's city council assessment hearing for the proposed assessments for parcel 959100156. This property consists of parcel 959100156 of 6.25 acres, and parcel number 330030073 consisting of 7.31 acres, for a total of 13.56 acres, and is located south and west of the Copperleaf Assisted Living Center at the corner of 15th Avenue and Northwest First Street. This area is designated as residential reserve in the city's comprehensive plan, and therefore is designated by the city for future residential development. Due to the size and configuration of the property, a subdivision would be the most sensible and cost-effective development, similar to the subdivisions of College View, College Park Circle, Oslo Heights, Northwoods, and Northwoods 2nd on 15th Avenue to the west. Similar to these subdivisions, there would be an entrance only off of 15th Avenue into the subdivision and no direct street addresses. This is based on discussions with county engineer Mel Odens, who mentioned he would like to possibly put a future roundabout for the intersection of 15th Avenue Northwest, the College Road, and 1st Avenue North. And I would make multiple entrances on 15th Avenue Northwest, and would make multiple entrances off of 15th Avenue Northwest unsafe. As these subdivisions have been determined not to have benefit due to no 15th Avenue Northwest street addresses, and are not being proposed to be assessed, I would ask that you and the city council consider removing the proposed assessments of $13,550 from parcel number 959100158 for the same non-benefit, and allow the future development of this parcel and parcel 330030073 for a single-family housing, which is needed and the city has set as one of their top priorities. Respectfully submitted, Steve and Jody Okens.
Okay, I'm gonna call on legal counsel to review the process.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, council. At this time, when there are objections, council generally would, under the law, required to sort of pass upon or sort of rule on those objections during the hearing. At this time, I think it's staff's recommendation that the hearing be continued to the next council meeting, to allow, so Bolt and Mink to address some of these requests, some of these objections we heard tonight. In which case, I would recommend sort of a series of motions here, including first, continuing the hearing to the next meeting for those parcels on which the city heard objections tonight, and then closing the hearing for all the parcels that did not object, and then making a motion to adopt the assessment rule subject to modifications, any future modifications made of the parcels that have objected. And then I can go through the list here, if you'd like, of the objections we heard tonight and have received in writing.
Just, just, I want to clarify with legal counsel and make sure that those in the room understand that if you have not voiced an objection for your property, that means we would not consider it. Is that accurate?
Right.
That's correct, okay. I'm assuming that maybe there's a couple more people that would like to then speak, but I could be wrong.
I did happen to visit with a couple city here, and their issue is they don't have an interpreter, and they don't speak English well.
They're going, they're going to speak, or?
If it's your desire that I will interpret, I certainly can.
Well, if they want to speak, yes.
Mi nombre es Alba Caballero. La dirección es 551 7th Street Northwest, Wilmer, Minnesota. And the address is 551 7th Street Northwest. Si, el motivo de que yo estoy aquí es porque recibimos esta carta. The reason why we are here is because we have received a letter. Si, donde se nos notifica que tenemos que pagar la cantidad de 3,400 dólares. And we have received a letter stating that we have to pay $3,400. Tenemos para pagarlo para el mes de... Eh, tenemos para pagarlo para el mes de... tenemos 30 días, parece.
And the way I read it is that we have 30 days to pay this.
Si no lo pagamos en ese tiempo, que nos va a subir este como cinco mil y fracción con los taxes que vamos a pagar.
So if we don't pay by then, we will be paying $5,000 plus if we...
Y entonces yo estoy aquí para... para ver qué es lo que yo estoy... qué es lo que voy a pagar, porque yo estoy viviendo en la siete... la siete calle, mi casa está en la esquina. Entonces ellos lo que arreglaron fue un pedacito de... no es de mi entrada, sino de la calle principal.
So I live on a corner lot and it seems like there's been some work done already on 7th Street.
No sé si podrán ver ellos ahí, en el mapa mi dirección. Entonces ellos... eso es lo que voy a pagar por ese pedacito, porque también está este... el driveway que está ahí atrás de mi casa, no sé si esa es la entrada que estoy pagando o el pedacito este que arreglaron ahí.
So I would like to find out what part of the property I'm paying for. And I see the parcel number is 95540 or 320, FYI.
A parcela.
Explain to her that it'll go to staff for review and...
So como ya puedo hablar, entonces ahora el staff va a revisar su petición y le va a responder en la próxima reunión.
And the hearing would be continued.
Sí, porque además ahorita para pagar... yo no tengo ahorita esa cantidad para parcelas pagar este mes porque yo no estoy trabajando.
So it will be a difficult bill for me to pay this time.
Si, yo no sé.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure there's some people who haven't spoken. If you've been here with a group or if there's someone else, to please put your name on there if you're here so that it can be reviewed. If you don't, then we can continue it. But if you're good, you're good, okay.
Tom?
Yeah, if we could get city staff to bring up what to do about the low-income deferral program that they've had in the past, that they go down to the city office, pick up that form, fill it out. I don't recall what it's called, but I think there's a program out there.
Pablo, could you explain that to them? If nobody else is going to...
I got a couple of the other members from the Elks has brought to my attention. So another thing that we... that was just brought to my attention, 2nd Street that runs behind our back building was not part of the project. That street has been drove down where the curb height in the street are about a six-inch height difference now. And we do have an overhead door to the back of that building, so the curb is about six-inch higher than the street right now. So I'm not sure what that... what they're going to do with that, being that street has been drove down and damaged. And then I had a question whether or not the AA building is right next to the Elks Lodge and the only way to get to the AA building is down 20th Street and around the back. Is the AA building assessed? Any assessments for going around the back of those... around the back on them streets?
Jared, can you shed any light on that?
Sure, thanks, counsel. So we are aware of the condition of 2nd Street as well as that parking lot. I had not heard anything about the temporary water line, but we'll look into that immediately. The... in terms of... the gentleman is correct, 2nd Street was not included as part of the project. So I don't have the entire roll with me, but I believe they... their address is 2nd Street and I do not believe they're included as part of the improvement because 2nd Street, excuse me, was not included as part of the project. So there are some repairs that need to be made to pavement, both the parking lot, 2nd Street, and the contractor is well aware of that and they will be taking care of those issues.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we're at the point of... okay.
I came more to... my name is Jen DeBar. I live on 1231 15th Avenue Northwest, parcel number 955600100. I came with the intention of not really talking, but listening to what everybody's saying, talking to some of my neighbors. My frustration is this is a large amount of money that we weren't given any say in. I'm not disabled, I'm not retired, but I have a college student, I'm a public educator. We're all dealing with economic hardships that are going on right now. The amount that's been assessed against our property is a semester of tuition and that's above and beyond mortgage payments, the cleanup that we needed to do in our yard, which compared to some of the other responses I've heard is fairly minimal. But it's a lot to ask for homeowners at this point or any point to drop sixty... over $6,700 in order to avoid interest payment. So I guess I'm going to echo what Renee said, that the road is nice, but the amount of improvement that we did, I don't know that it really balances out. So I guess I would like things reviewed. If there's any way that things could be reduced, that would be great. I don't know if I have any shot on that, but it's just... it's a lot and I think that's what a lot of people are feeling right now. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Hello, Chad Oakley, parcel number 955600170. I'd just like to echo the sentiment of the previous speaker. $6,775 is a lot that we didn't really have a lot of say in. The road's nice. If there's any way that you could review it, possibly make some other considerations, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Harley Devonport with the Elks Lodge, and we'll talk about 2nd Street. That's the one that was not in the building at all. The... that door that Chris referred to is the door to our car wash. Income to that, so that's been since day one. You couldn't get there and wash your car if you wanted and that is not... the Elks do pay for that or anybody else. It's not a big deal, but there's like seven guys that pay $15 a month. Not a big deal, but there's no way that they're going to pay for the five or six... four or five months and not even be able to see it, much less jump that curb that's six to eight inches deep in that mud. So it sounds like he's going to look at it, but that's really important.
All right. We're at the point to looking for a motion to continue the public hearing.
I can make that motion to continue the public hearing.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Counsel, may I just clarify? This would be a motion to continue the public hearing specifically for the, by my count, 13 properties that have objected, submitted objections today and to continue that public hearing until the next city council meeting, regular meeting.
Is that your intent, Audrey?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a second motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly. Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The motion passes. Do we have to take a motion for the remaining properties now?
I would take a motion to close the hearing for the properties that have not submitted objections.
Okay.
So moved.
We got a motion and a second for doing so. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Thank you, everybody. What's that?
One more.
Sorry, and for the last motion here, I'd recommend a motion to adopt the assessment rule subject to modifications made for any of the 13 properties that have objected.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
We got a motion in that and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Next is... we're going to set a special assessment hearing for unpaid weed, grass mowing removal charges. City clerk, Renee Larson.
Tonight, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm asking for you to set a public hearing for October 6, 2025, for a special assessment hearing for the unpaid fire alarm system charges for the four properties listed below. 950091400, 951420280, 959131220, and 959090160. I'm also doing... oh, that's the first one, sorry. The first one is for unpaid weed and grass mowing removal charges. Three properties have outstanding charges that have been billed to the homeowner and have not been paid and they are as listed on the card. We're asking for a special hearing to be held or to be called for a special hearing for October 6, 2025 for those special assessments.
Looking for a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion?
Just to clarify which one we're voting on.
You're voting on the grass removal charges.
Thank you.
Tom?
Are any of these had previous years where they've been on assessment for yard work?
I'm not sure. I would have to look at that up and have that available at the hearing. I couldn't give you that answer tonight.
Any other questions? This is to set a motion to set the public hearing. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Now we've got the special assessment hearing for unpaid fire alarms.
Correct, so I'm also looking for you to... I'm asking that you set a special... or public hearing for special assessment hearing for the unpaid fire alarm system charges. These properties also have had... one property's had multiple calls, but have outstanding bills with the city that they have been billed for that they are not paying and we are asking that they be added to the... that we set a public hearing for those properties.
Make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Our motion passes. Next is a transfer of property with... on Highway 40 right-of-way with Mendot. Call on our city administrator, Leslie Valiant.
Good evening, councils. So tonight, we're looking for a motion to approve the contribution of city land along Trunk Highway 40. We are currently working with Mendot to establish the right-aways along Highway 40 because we have that TED grant to create the right-of-way turn-in into the rail property. So this would approve that transfer of land just for the 25 feet, 30 feet, half acre of parcel along Trunk Highway 40.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Tom?
Just curious how this right-of-way falls into our recent land use and making sure that it falls in line and within our land use.
This is... this is a project we started over a year ago with Mendot. We received a TED grant for Highway 40 to create a turn lane. So yes, this falls in our land use because this is creating a turn lane into our industrial park.
These essential turn lanes for truck traffic into our new developments in the industrial park. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Next, I'll call on our city administrator, Leslie Valiant, again to set the gears in motion to set a budget work session.
Yes, we'd like to set a budget work session next week. Options are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. There are a couple councilmembers that can't make it on Thursday and one that can't make it on Thursday and one that can't make it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So the fire hall, I'd prefer to be at the fire hall and the fire hall is open Monday through Wednesday. Other than that, we'd have to go out to the Rec Event Center and then that is open Tuesday through Thursday. Unless you want to have a day meeting, then we could be at the fire hall. But I'm going to leave that up to council discussion.
Counsel, what?
I would prefer to have it Monday evening, Monday, the 25th, at the fire hall.
How does that fit everybody?
It doesn't fit me very good. 6:30 or 7:00 would probably work for me on Monday.
What time did you say, Carl?
I didn't say a time, but I mean, I'd go 6:30, I suppose, if that's best for you, Tom.
I'll 6:30 next Monday. No?
I'll be out of town.
I'm out of town all week next week.
Ouch. Almost have to do it next week, don't we?
Yes, otherwise you have to wait until the meeting, the September 2nd meeting. That's when the preliminary budget will be presented.
Mr. Gilbertson, you're here Thursday? Or Thursday does work for you?
Thursday evening, yeah.
You can't do Thursday.
We're not going to have everybody there, that's pretty clear.
Tuesday, you're gone all week?
I will be gone Monday and Tuesday.
You're gone Monday and Tuesday. And Justin is gone all week.
Meet without me.
So...
Wednesday.
How does Wednesday work? This side of the table first. I nod your head or shake it back. Okay, how about over here? All right, so Wednesday night at 6:30? Does that work?
Yeah.
All right, Wednesday night, 6:30.
At the fire hall.
Fire hall.
Is there a time that we need to give notice? Would this week work?
We don't have enough time to give notice.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Wednesday, 6:30?
Yep, yeah, 27th, yeah.
That's the 27th?
Yes.
All right. We need a motion to set that date and time.
I'll move to set a work session for Wednesday, August 27th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. I think we've discussed it. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
No.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly. Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
That motion carries. All right, any announcements from any council members or staff? If not, a motion to adjourn. We'll adjourn.
Second. Announcements? No announcements this evening, Mayor?
I asked.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Did you have some?
Encourage the councils... council on Monday to tour the new water treatment, $17 million water treatment plant with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities this Wednesday at noon. You should get a invitation, so.
All right. We had a motion and a second. We're adjourned.